Here I am. And a call to order, the town of Old Saybrook, zoning commission. Regular meeting agenda for Monday, July 21st, 2025, 7:00 PM, Town Hall, Bird Floor Conference Room. At 302 Main Street, Old Saybrook. Roll call, myself, Mark Elarilla, Chair, Jerry Lewis, Vice Chair. Secretary John Henry and regular commission members. Robert Freeman and Laura Gray, also we alternate Mike Kelly and Brenda Dyson. As well as our. Joey and Gally, our recording clerk and our CEO, Chris Costa. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six in the audience. And nobody on, no one online. Regular business. Minutes from our. Monday, July 7th, 2025 meeting, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Alright, motion made by Jerry Lewis, seconded by John Henry. Are there any changes, discussions, modifications? To the agenda, not hearing any, move on to a vote. All those in favor signal by saying aye, aye, opposed, abstaining, passes 5-0-0. Any correspondence other than what's in front of us on our agenda this evening?
Yeah.
No. There was a request this evening to flip A and B. And start with the Cancer Foundation and Shoreline Auto Second. So I make a motion to amend. The agenda to move B to A and A to B.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis. Any discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye, aye, passes 5-0-0. Public hearing. A Connecticut Cancer Foundation, application modification to special exception permit. To retain the paver patio outdoor space. And add four benches, 15 North Main Street, map 40, lot 6. Shopping Center Business B2 District. Owner applicant CF 15 North Main Street LLC, Agent Joe Wren. Action, open public hearing, continue or close by August 18th and no later than August 24th. Mr. Wren, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Joe Wren, President of the Mayor, I'm going to go here and. With me here is Jane Ellis, who you know, run the Cancer Foundation in town at 15 North Main Street. You all know the history. We tried to outline some of the statement of use that we provided with the application. Last time we were in front of you for a text amendment, it was suggested. By the board and rather, rather than go through that text amendment to utilize. Section 68.1.8.3 of the regulation which allows. A read it for me, it was included in the statement of use. The sidewalk or path, any development may make use of its proximity to a public sidewalk. Or its own site paths to create an outdoor space by bumping out a space of not less than 18 square feet. On either side of the walkway such as for a bench or picnic table. So on the site plan that we provided, we color coded it. We have pink and purple areas on there, on this particular site plan, we identified. Those areas showing that they're more than 18 square feet to be consistent with that regulation. And also we have added four benches on here to be consistent. With the regulation as well, as it says for a bench or picnic table. So we've added a total of four benches. And you can see on the plan that the pink area identified. That extra patio area to be retained off the sidewalk. Is 390 square feet, which obviously exceeds the 18 and then the purple area. Is 49 square feet. Which obviously exceeds the 18 square feet, so. This was reviewed, the 171 fees for your town attorney to review this application. In speaking with Attorney Casella, who spoke to Attorney Willis, he has no comment. On this, so no comment tells me that he finds it consistent with the regulation. So with that, there's really not much more of the presentation, the site looks beautiful, as you all know, you drive by it every day. Looks beautiful from North Main Street, it maintains perfectly. And we're hoping to finally put this to an end, being consistent with this newer regulation, that's now. Part of your zoning regulation, so if you have any questions for me or Ed or Jane. You can entertain us.
Any questions from the commissioners? Of the applicant? The bosses?
Well, we. We've seen the. History of this. Property and its application process over a course of. What do we, nine years, almost nine years now? And. The paved patio that's shown in, in pink and is both an area. To the north of the block from the sidewalk to the front of the building. That were not part of any previous approval. And that this application is to retain something which is in existence but was never approved. And the minimum front landscaped area. Was there on the initial plans that were approved? And just pavers were installed in the front landscaped area and in section nine, the definition of. Purvious pavers clearly says that they are not landscaping. So this does, still does not meet the landscaping requirement. And that's, the landscaping requirement is in. Section, the front landscaped area, section 63.3.1 point B, and that's 25 feet. And then there's the fact that all landscaping has to be compliant. And the. That's in 51.6.4 point B, point 2, point C, point 4. That the landscaping must be compliant and this is not. And one, one further question for. Mr. Wren, it says, it says on here, one flowering dogwood, recently installed street tree. How recent?
That was from a previous plan, it's probably been there now about eight years maybe?
Oh, at least.
Few years, is it yet up to the minimum dimension of three and a half inches caliber at the BBA?
I can go measure, but it's pretty darn.
It took a long time for that tree to, to become compliant.
And now magically.
It wasn't when it was installed. Are there now sufficient street trees, one at every 40 feet?
We have a sufficient number of street trees, yes. As far as. As far as every 40 feet, you know, the building is very close, it's not within nine feet of front property line. Which is allowed in the pedestrian note and that was the portion of the historical building. So the. Patio is also close to the street, but 68.1.8.3 may conflict with that because all. Sidewalks have to be connected to public sidewalks and therefore have to be close proximity, so the majority of these. Like the Dunkin' Donuts drive through, where those benches are, are going to be in the front landscape area like those are. That's where they're going to end up, so maybe the regulations conflict, but it's consistent with that regulation. We meet. By far, the number of shrubs by the number of trees, we, that was already approved, we exceed all that, the landscape area we exceed. We exceed the, the front landscape area other than the distance from the property line to. That area, and at the time this was done, section nine wasn't clarified, the site purvious favors are. That definition was added later. Because at the time we did that, it was not part of that commission that actually allowed ornamental plazas, but the determination by the commission was that that. Wasn't allowed in the front landscape area, so that was later clarified. We feel this meets the purpose and the intent, there's not one person, one resident on Old Saybrook who doesn't think this is a good idea to retain these. Paver bricks for that benefit cancer patients. Previous application, we had overwhelming support from a number of people, there's no opposition to this. It looks beautiful, we wish every property in town would look as nice as this one does and maintained. This nicely. So I, I disagree, it doesn't meet any purpose in the town, your regulations. And it's in line with 68.1.8.3. And again, if the regulations conflict, that might be a subject of a future amendment, but. We believe it meets the purpose and intent and A183 and no issues were brought up by your own attorney. For the site application, so we, we feel that it's approvable in its current condition.
Another question?
Yes.
Well.
Where? In the manual, does it mention that pavers are now allowed?
They put about the.
The pavers are now allowed, what, what regulation is that?
What, what was eventually approved was a five foot wide walkway from the sidewalk to the front of the building. And from along the front. Plane of the building, a five foot wide walkway to the side of the building and then to the rear. None of this paved patio shown in pink here was part of any previous approval.
Right. So the biggest issue with this is just the size, it's well beyond the 18. Square foot, is that the biggest issue with it?
No, the, the regulation says of not less than 18 square feet, so it's supposed to be larger than 18 square, which for those areas are. Bob. Had referenced section nine, which says that purvious pavers are not allowed in the front landscape area.
Okay.
That's what he mentioned before. And that's the predicament, I mean, we were asked to come back with. Under, under this section, so that's what we did, we paid 171, the foundation paid 171 fees, the new application fees. And we're here per your suggestion and your attorney doesn't have any issue with this, so. I don't, you know. There, there really no other options for this applicant. But it clearly meets your regulations, so I.
So just.
The. Regulation you're referencing is in section 68. And it's in 68.1.3 outdoor space. And it's under. A, a public common or shared place. And it's, and then that's. Number three sidewalk or path. But the whole of 68.1.3 is outdoor space. Which is part of a neighborhood adelan building design. In which. That number three under 68.1.3 or a. Or its own site onsite pass to create an outdoor space. By bumping out a space of not less than 18 square feet on either side of the walkway. Such as for a bench or picnic table, but that was related to. Public common or shared place. It's a development as proposed to create a new neighborhood or significantly contribute to the pattern of an existing neighborhood. Including incentive housing development, open space subdivision, planned residential development or two family dwelling. Will provide public common or shared open space as required by these regulations for recreation, leisure, socializing. Or interfacing with mixed uses. The area of any series of open spaces on any property will average at least one half acre in size. This is under that, and I don't see that there is an area of one half acre in size. Entailed as public common or shared space. These regulations were with regard to new developments. Especially with the italicized words there, incentive housing development, open space subdivision, planned residential development. Or two family dwelling. It is not to provide, to be applied to a B2 business district sidewalk.
I disagree because it does say to supplement, it does say to supplement existing developments and you have 183 apartments right behind that connected in two directions. And you have the train station connected by the sidewalk, so I disagree, it's a heavily pedestrian trafficked area. And it's augmenting an existing neighborhood to make it, to make it, they're inviting people.
I would like to, I would like to read into the record, the timeline, history, okay, I think for clarity. It would be helpful for all of us. So the Cancer Foundation permit application timeline at 15 North Main Street. On August 15th, 2016, the zoning commission granted a special exception permit. By the number 16-105 to the Connecticut Cancer Foundation for an office. An charitable institution, the proposal did not include an impervious patio area in a 25 foot landscaped area. Following the 2016 approval, there were deviations from the approved special exception permit, including an impervious patio. Construction in the front landscape area. On December 3rd of 2018, the zoning commission approved the modification. To the 2016 special exception permit, one of the conditions of approval was to remove the paver patio in front of the building. During the meeting, the commission determined that an impervious patio was not landscaping. On January 9th of 2019, the zoning board of appeals granted a variance to allow the patio to remain in 25 foot. Front landscaping buffer, the zoning commission appealed the granting of the variance by the ZBA to the Middletown Superior Court. On February 19th of 2020, the zoning commission denied a modification to special exception permit number. 16-105 to keep the patio as an ornamental plaza with paver bricks. While the appeal between ZBA and zoning commission was pending in Superior Court. The zoning commission denied the 2020 modification because the patio in question was not permitted, not landscaped. And violated the regulation. On May 5th of 2021, Judge Claudia Vail ruled to reverse the decision of the ZBA appeal. Due to a lack of hardship. The reversal of the variance resulted in supporting the zoning commission's decision to require the removal of the patio. In addition to the request for modifications to the special exception permit. There were several, several preliminary discussions. Between the CCF and the zoning commission, where the zoning commission consistently interpreted that the patio is not landscaping. And should be removed.
But that needs to be continued to say when you amended your zoning regulations to allow to add 68.1.8.3, which is, this is not consistent.
Are, are there any additional?
68.1.8.3 was adopted with the new section 68 on July 20th of 2009 and went into effect. On August 17th of 2009, which was seven years prior to the Cancer Foundation application.
Can, can I add one thing, because it's pertinent to this timeline?
Did you identify yourself?
Yeah, and Casella. When we, we filed an application for text amendment. And we had a public hearing here on February 3rd, 2025. And a few things came out. First, we talked about how we believed. Areas off. Public sidewalks for benches. Like what's shown on the plan here are consistent. With other developments, including the Dunkin' Donuts, what, what used to be Smithland Supply. And that got into a conversation that those. Concrete areas with benches were approved under this section. The section 68. And the commission, if you all remember, and if you both know tonight, I want you to go watch that YouTube video. All said, we don't need to do a text amendment because it's, there's already an avenue in the zoning regulations. And now we're hearing that's not an avenue. Because it shouldn't have been applied against, against Dunkin' Donuts and it won't be applied as, as an argument, obviously there's. There's five members of the commission that can vote on this, but you know, six months ago it was an avenue. We're asking it for it to be an avenue, this is meant to be public space, it's a public facility. It's a nonprofit, it's an area that's immediately off the sidewalk, it's greater than 18 square feet. Supposed to have benches. And, and you know, that's, that's why we're seeking, so I think there, there needed to be an additional step in the whole permitting process. Make sure we talked about it at the February meeting.
Okay. Laura?
Um, so I have the. Some of the paperwork from that meeting. Date of January 28th, 2025. The, the planning commission had taken some time to. Suggest an amendment and we did vote it down. But what I don't understand, I, I do understand that. This design wasn't part of the original. What do you call it, application? And then they tried to. Get a special exception. But if they were to come to us today without all this history and, or somebody came and wanted to put. The same patio in. Would we allow it today, because I'm just trying to understand if the problem is it wasn't in the original plans? Or if this is still not accepted by the regulations?
It wasn't in the plans that were approved in front of this commission.
Right. But if, if somebody tried to do this exact same thing today.
They would have to go through the same process. I, I don't know, you'd have to look at the whole application. Can't just, just can't pull out one piece of an application and say, would we approve it or not?
If we were just looking at this one piece. Because it is, and, and this is what, why the planning commission wanted to rewrite. Or they, they had a petition to amend the regulations. Is because it is a little bit confusing as to what is permissible and what's not.
Keep, keep in mind that the application that was approved did not include this area.
Right, yeah.
See, they went, they went to ZBA, ZBA granted a variance. We appealed it to the Middletown Court.
Right.
And the judge favors, in favor, but ruled that the zoning commission was correct and reversed that decision.
I understand, and that was very helpful to read that document that you emailed to us and then for you to reread it, I understand that. I'm just struggling with the fact that we want to have pedestrian friendly sidewalks up and down Route 1. We want to make it interesting to walk up and down Route 1. And this is just a really interesting. Patio.
I, I would, I would, I would say that. What's the sense of having zoning regulations if they're not enforceable? People, why have a zoning commission? If you're not going to live up to. The regulations.
I understand.
The word the judge used in her decision, Judge Vail, Vail was chaos.
Oh.
For a nonprofit, that's a great word. I, I completely disagree, if you go there right now. It's, and you look across the street on the town of Old Saybrook property at the Monkey Farm, you compare the landscaping of both. At the Monkey Farm, you have stamped pavement islands, there's no landscape interest there at all. You look across the street, you see beautiful blooming hydrangea bushes and flowers and trees and, and they're getting the runner for this, it. Clearly meets your regulations 68. Point 1.8.3, I don't know why this didn't, hasn't come up in this whole history, but it was suggested like Ed just. Elegantly stated by this board to come back under that, that's what they spent money and time to do. And now we're in front of you and now you're telling us that's not an option. It's just unfair, they're, they're, they helped cancer patients, they don't make profit, the place looks beautiful. They preserved an historic building, the place was a dump before, like, don't they get credit for improving the site? We're not asking to vary the zoning regulations, it, it meets the spirit and the intent. The planning commission, as Laura eloquently said. When we were in here for the amendment, they, they voted to approve it, they said it meets. The intent, purpose of the regulations and the planning conservation development. I don't understand why others don't see it the same way. They, they, they didn't pay for this, it was done pro bono, it wasn't on the plan, but the landscaper said, we're going to do this for you. As a donation and then we can have, you can have donation bricks. As part of it, and that's what, that's what they did, now if they're forced to. Pay to remove all, all of that and relocate it, I mean. How, how is that justice? How is that fair and reasonable for Town of Old Saybrook, if anyone wanted to do this? In town and make it look as nice as that does, we'd have to say yes. As you know, I've been involved with many, many site plans around them. Landscape that looked beautiful, on plan to meet your regulations and then they don't maintain it and they're not pleased to maintain it and that looks terrible. Over time, this has been perfectly maintained, it looks beautiful, I'm not really sure why they're. They're just instinctive, it's just unfair.
And I have some questions.
Sure.
Why did you all recommend that we come back here and make this application? If it wasn't going to be approved and we spent time and money on this, when you recommended to us at our last meeting to come back here. Under this, I don't know what you call it, Joe. Why did you recommend that we do that?
I don't recall. Excuse me, can I finish what I was going to say before you jump to a conclusion?
Yeah, well.
Okay.
Don't recall, okay.
Now I don't have the minutes in front of me or that to, to say, yes, I do or I don't. Maybe your memory is better than I, I'll go back and look at. Please, we're trying to, we're trying to be open and transparent here, so. Alright, I'm finished.
Shouldn't you read, shouldn't you have read the minutes before this meeting to say what we're discussing?
I was in the meeting.
Oh, okay. But you just said you don't recall.
Why did you put in a patio that wasn't approved?
It was meant, it was not maliciously done, a donor came to me after we put in the plans and said, I'd like to help conservations. I have a wonderful landscaping plan for you all. And I said, that would be fantastic. And donor bricks, again, helping cancer patients. Who, what charity would turn down a $35,000 donation of landscaping to help cancer patients? Who would do that? I had no, it never crossed my mind. That it would be a problem because it wasn't on the plan that we, we submitted, never crossed my mind. I was just happy. To get a $35,000 landscaping donation. And if any of you have ever taken. Part in fundraising, if you know how difficult that is to do. And then someone comes to you and says, I want to give you $35,000 landscaping. What, I'm, I'm supposed to say no? At, at a beautiful building, probably. Could be the most beautiful building in Old Saybrook. And we have gotten nothing but resistance from the, the planning zoning board. Who then sued their own. Board of Appeals, who does that, when I tell, when I tell residents that in Old Saybrook. They are astounded.
Then why, why did the judge uphold the, the zoning?
Because the judge went purely by paperwork. Okay, not anything else, just black and white paperwork.
Right, and it was black and white.
And there were many times that you all could have approved this for this eight year process.
I think the history is clear. Okay, and I think to go back in time over that is not going to do you nor us any good, okay?
I'm asking you too, I'm asking, why did you tell us to come?
You're here in front of us with an application, alright, in a public hearing.
That we do.
You're here with an application.
Yes.
Okay, so it is the responsibility of the zoning commission to listen to the applicant, to listen to its experts and then. Take it under consideration.
But you still haven't answered my question.
I don't have to answer that question.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I have a, I have a question, and this has been brought up before. But. Ed brought up the Dunkin' Donuts, say, down the street, there are. There are concrete areas, these are dry laid paver, there are concrete areas. With no landscaping in front, with a bench on it, how does that meet the regulation and this does not? Can someone answer that question? There was no incentive housing zone there, there are more apartments here, there are a couple hundred plus 250 units within walking distance of this one. There's a train station to Main Street, everyone watching the train station, the Starbucks all the time walks right by the site. Every resident in the, in the 183 apartments walks right by the site. I, I disagree, I, I think there's just, because of the history, I think there's some anger and frustration. And then some people are siding with that side rather than looking at the whole picture of being a human being. I just, I really don't, I, I don't understand. I just, I really don't, I I don't understand it. I I remember someone in one of the meetings standing up saying it will be a really sad day in Old Saybrook to see an excavator in front of there ripping up that patio. Is is that what we really want? It it's really baffling. Is that the community we're trying to be? There are other areas that have site plans on file that have paving equipment and jet skis out on the front lanes, even into the D O T right away. Right across the 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 intersection from here. Yes, it's in the B one zone. It's not in the B two, but it's within an airshop. You have, you have the Chamber of Commerce patio and Starbucks patio right to the sidewalk. There's no landscape interest at all. Here, we're in the same pedestrian node, the same intersection, beautifully landscaping. We're just asking to keep the thirty five thousand dollar donation for a nonprofit. Like, let's just be a human rather than a zoning commission. We're reading through some regulations. They've asked us to come in with this application. We're here. And take offense that you're referring to this commission as being unhuman. I didn't say that. You said. I said, consider, I said, consider the human element. Right. Understand the purpose of me saying that. Are there any? Together all the time on a lot of different applications. I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying there's a human element to this. There's a there's a common sense approach and elements to this project. No one can answer the question about these other sites in town that have site plans on file that clearly have same or worse issue and they're not being targeted for any reason. Why?
So just to, and we we hashed this out at a previous hearing. We're gonna talk about Starbucks. Starbucks has variances. There are parking spaces across the street from the Monkey Farm. We're talking about automotive dealers like the one across the street or next door to Starbucks that are preexisting nonconforming. We went through several of these, some of these resting places that were put in when the town got a sidewalk grant with benches were not associated with developments. And in one of the previous applications, we went through painfully photo by photo of all of those and and had this discussion.
Sidewalk grants are not. It's still ask them to meet the zoning regulations. They got a grant as well. Right? They got a donation, they got a grant. Why can't they put this in?
Part of it. The the other projects and at the time that was.
Side by side.
Sidewalks did not go through the zoning commission. There were resting areas that were put into place. There's one over by the porgel shop. There's several along, some of them are next to bustings.
It appears to me that the application is dependent on an interpretation that I think is misconstrued from section sixty eight point one point three, outdoor space, part A, part three. Especially in what's shown on the plan. And that the first bench that's closest to the sidewalk is eighteen feet off the sidewalk and around the corner. And that's not, to me, what the intent of the sidewalk or path outdoor space or the public was supposed to occur from what the regulations say. There are four benches proposed in total. And the the two that are closest to the walk that leads directly from the sidewalk to the front of the building, notice it's not the main entrance, that's at the rear of the building, that the other two benches are another twenty or 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 thirty some odd feet away from the first bench. And it's hardly a case of outdoor space for pedestrian road traffic for someone to have to walk twenty feet off the sidewalk and make a turn and then proceed another distance to get to another bench. That's not the intent of the regulation.
We could add another sidewalk connection.
That's an interpretation that does not go along with what outdoor space for the italicized incentive housing development, open space subdivision, planned residential development or two family dwellings or or a significant contribution to the pattern of an existing neighborhood. That's not what the regulation, what what's on this plan is not what that regulation is shooting for.
We could add a sidewalk connection if that's what bothers. Twenty, thirty feet is nothing. It's compared to the wall. It's, you know, we're not talking about two hundred feet. Any anytime you go off the sidewalk, you're gonna be walking twenty, thirty, forty, fifty feet. We walk thousands of feet every day just naturally. I don't think twenty, it doesn't say, it doesn't give a distance in there. If you could tell me with a straight face that the Dunkin' Donuts ones meet your regulation and this doesn't? Hey, I I don't, I don't get it. Don't know that anyone could give me that answer.
I I got a question. I didn't I haven't been on the commission since this all started, but somewhere in the middle of it. And the burning question in my mind is why haven't you complied with the corridor? It's been years. And I drive by that place a lot and I think, gee, when are they ever gonna comply with the corridor? And now you're here telling us that we have, we have advised you to do this, which I I I'd like to see that, because I'd like to see that too.
It was.
Specifically set sixty eight.
Okay, I just said I'd like to see that. And my burning question, why haven't you complied with the corridor?
There were COVID delays. Jane could probably answer that more. There was a letter right from the town, but then it just.
Yeah, it it was just all very disappointing, to tell you the truth, that that the town would do such a thing to a charity.
But this was the court.
Yes.
A judge told you to do it.
Exactly.
Not us.
Exactly.
You're less disappointed, so you're not gonna do it.
Well, we were hoping that continuing the fight would be, you know, that people would come around as as everyone in Old Saybrook wants us to keep these bricks. So we were hoping the commission also would come around to say, hey, this is really a good thing. And as I'm sure you all make exceptions all the time for different properties. I'm not sure why that wasn't the case here.
Okay, you answer my question.
There's just, there are many other properties in town. New businesses have moved in. Is there, is there any other? Computers. You you stated that before. I've never said anything about where computers used to be. That they have paving equipment like right up to the edge of the D O T right away and they're not here in front of you.
So that's a violation that Attorney Casella is handling and bringing to the commission. So he's told me it would be here any day and there is an enforcement action against them. So we expect to see that very soon. Right?
And also, I could answer the question. It costs money, frankly, to have these bricks excavated. And I would rather take the money to cancer patients than tearing your bricks that are you all keep throwing them in purgias.
Do it.
We don't, we don't have one po on that, on these bricks when it's for.
Yes.
So I don't, that's another thing I really don't get. And I, maybe you would like to answer a question. Why do you ask us to come back here and submit this application?
I'm just looking for compliance with the regulations. Don't have that.
But why did you ask?
With regard to the paved patio ever.
Why did you ask us to come back here and submit this application?
She's wondering why you asked them to come back and submit this application.
At the time, Mr. Casella said February that this was brought up. Perhaps I didn't look enough to see the target of the intent at that moment. But it could be construed that if this were to apply, and I don't think it does, that the and and outdoor space by bumping out a space of not less than eighteen square feet on either side of the walkway, such as for a bench or picnic table to on the sidewalk or path with regard to a public, common or shared space. I don't see this as a public, common or shared space because of the elevation of the landscaping between the sidewalk and the pavers that are pink on this plant and purple. Right? If there were to be something closer to what's mentioned in the regulations, I would have perhaps considered, although I'm not saying that I'm redesigning their plans to consider it. But eight, a minimum of eighteen square feet for a bench on either side of the walkway that leads from the sidewalk to the front of the building. Not the front door, remember, just to the front of the building. If there was one bench on either side, eighteen square feet for each bench would have been, would have met the regulations. We have over a hundred and nine square feet of patio here, but four benches, which are three of them are on one side and one is on the other side of the of the walkway. So it's just not, it doesn't meet the regulations. It's already there. Putting benches on it doesn't change the fact that the paved patio is not compliant with the regulations. On landscaped area and and fifty one six four B two C four, that all the landscaping regulations are to be complied with. This doesn't do it.
So I disagree with that. This is a very public area. Is there something that would help make it more public? If we had a wave finding sign saying this area is accessible to the public with easement, which we've mentioned before in the past, over that? Or a connection to the the sidewalk that goes along the grass area to the south that pair over to the apartments? Or another sidewalk connection to that part? Is there something that would, in your mind, make it more public?
It's the pavers that are the problem. You're trying to create a public space in order to justify the existence of the pick of the pavers which are not approved and don't comply and don't belong where they are. I understand your goal, but there's, I don't see that there's a way for you to comply with the regulation as required by calling it something else.
So if this doesn't comply, then how does, how do the ones at Dunkin' Donuts comply?
Your your question, what, what's your question?
There are not benches on both sides of the sidewalk. Two of them may be twenty square feet or so with, and there's one really large, half the size of this room. No one ever uses it. There's no housing in the area. There's not people that walk by and have been up by there thousands of times. I've never seen anyone sitting there maybe occasionally. Here you have, you're in a pedestrian node, you have people through this intersection all of the time. I don't understand how it's not. I really don't. If you want to continue the matter, so folks could listen to that meeting where it was recommended, that that's that's the reason why we're back here. Jane had the foundation, had to spend more money and more time because the Order in seventy one fees applied for Attorney Willis to review this. And I haven't seen or heard or any correspondence from him yet, other than just his conversation with him. I don't know if there's a letter in file that hasn't been written for the record yet. But he didn't find anything legally incorrect with this, and that's why he didn't comment.
He he didn't comment because he didn't comment, not because he was saying.
If there was something wrong, he would have commented correctly.
No, not necessary.
Not necessary. There was something legally inappropriate. That's his job.
The reason we sent an Order in seventy one estimate was in the event we needed Attorney Willis to attend this meeting. Attorney Willis did not write a review letter and he did not comment. He's not wasting the, not wasting the Cancer Foundation's money. He reviewed it. He's not commenting.
Right, so the entire Order in seventy one fee to be returned.
Well, and then the calls that were made to see if he was gonna comment, there was a brief review and it was determined that he was not gonna attend the meeting and he was not coming.
So I don't know if Ed agrees or not. I don't know if it's helpful. I heard from at least one commissioner that they would like to see that video of the meeting when this was recommended to the new chairman and said, to be honest with you, it's a sole purpose water factor. We saw it as a shining light, like at the end of the tunnel. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We've never been here a thousand times. We've never used that regulation in any other developed or plans with it. And it was brought to our attention and we embraced it. We put all all of this together. Per your suggestion, and that is violer's here. Well, all I can offer is if you want us to view that video the commission, we have to continue the meeting to August eighteen. If that's something the applicant would agree to, then.
I think it's something the commission needs.
The commission would have to discuss about it, but if it's something that the commission would agree to, we could continue this meeting to the eighteenth if we wanted to take the time to view that last uh, video.
I I don't see that as necessary because what I see as part of, is this application before us, it does not comply with the regulations and it does not comport with the outdoor space sidewalk or path section in the neighborhood patterns and building design section. It, I don't see that it complies and I don't see that there is, there there that this answers the problem of having pavers in the front landscape areas which which were never approved.
I I I would concur with you being correct. They were not approved.
There's room on the property for pavers. If they put them somewhere else, it would be a different issue. But this was installed and it has a long history with not almost nine years now where they're, they they have been in place and were not approved. And we've been through a lot and the indication from one commissioner is that the paver should be removed. There's other places, they can be removed and they can go somewhere else on the property and comply with the regulations.
Okay.
They could, they should all be landscaped.
Jerry?
Great with Bob.
John?
Mm-hmm.
Laura?
I'm with Bob.
And I also agree. So that aside, do any of the commissioners have any additional questions? If not, I will open it to the public, either in person here in the room or online, raise your hand. Anybody in the room willing to speak on behalf of or against this application? Please indicate by sharing your name. No one in the room and no one online. That being said, I would, are we prepared to close public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, all right, so I'll make a motion to close public hearing on a Connecticut Cancer Foundation application modification to a special exception permit to retain the paper patio outdoor space and add four benches.
Second.
Second by Jerry Lewis. Is there any discussion? I'm hearing any, all of all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstains, passes five zeros early. Now that we're in in, we close public hearing, there's no additional input other than from staff or the public or alternate members at this point. Does the commission feel that they have enough materials this evening to make a decision or to continue?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes? Laura, yes. John, yes. Mark, yes. Okay. I'm sorry.
So I was asked to draft motions in favor and against if we got to the point of delivering the plans of those passes.
Your point then?
Yep.
Take a few minutes to review them individually?
Okay. I'm prepared to make a motion. According to a draft motion from our consulting attorney. I will make a motion to deny the Connecticut Cancer Foundation application for the modification to a special exception permit to retain the paper patio outdoor space. And add four benches at fifteen North Main Street map forty lot six, shopping center business B two district with the following reasons. On August fifteenth, twenty sixteen, a special exception permit number sixteen dash one oh five was granted for this property as an office philanthropic charitable institu- institution. The proposal did not include an impervious patio area in the twenty-five foot front landscape area. In addition to what's written, I would say the proposal did not include a patio area in a twenty-five foot front landscaped area. Following the twenty sixteen approval, an impervious patio was constructed in the front landscape area in violation of the special exception permit granted. On December third, twenty eighteen, the zoning commission approved the modification to the twenty sixteen special exception permit. One of the conditions of approval was to remove the paved patio in front of the building. During the meeting, the commission determined that an impervious patio was not landscaped. On January ninth, twenty nineteen, the zoning board of appeal granted a variance to allow the patio to remain in a twenty-five foot front landscaping buffer. The zoning commission appealed the granting of the variance by the zoning board of appeals to Superior Court. On February nineteenth, twenty twenty, the zoning commission denied a modification to special exception permit number sixteen dash one oh five to keep the patio as an ornamental plaza with paper bricks while the appeal between the zoning commission and zoning board of appeals was pending in Superior Court. The zoning commission denied the twenty twenty modification because the patio in question was not permitted, not landscaping and violated the regulations. On May fifth, May fifth, twenty twenty-one, Judge Claudia Dio ruled to reverse the decision of the zoning board of appeals due to a lack of hardship. The reversal of the variance resulted in supporting the zoning commission's decision to remove the patio. In addition to the requests for modifications to the special exception permit, there were several preliminary discussions between the Connecticut Cancer Foundation and the zoning commission, where the zoning commission consistently interpreted that the patio is not landscaping and should be removed. As of the date of this motion, the patio remains on the premises in violation of the twenty sixteen special exception permit. The statement of use associated with this twenty twenty-five request to modify the special exception permit states, most recently, a zoning text amendment was requested and denied by the zoning commission since the most recent updated regulations now have a provision to allow for these paper outdoor spaces. Section sixty-eight point one point three A point, point three reads as follows. Three sidewalk or path, any development may make use of its proximity to a public sidewalk or its own onsite paths to create an outdoor space by bumping out a space of not less than eighteen square feet on either side of the walkway, such as for a bench or picnic table. The updated plan included with this application shows these outdoor spaces and also proposed four bench locations to add to the attractions of passersby, end of quote. Section sixty-eight point one point three eight point three is not a new regulation. It was adopted on July twentieth, two thousand nine and went into effect on August seventeenth, two thousand nine, when the town's incentive housing zone regulations were adopted. This regulation was in effect seven years prior to the original Ca- Connecticut Cancer Foundation special exception permit was approved on August twenty, August fifteenth, twenty sixteen, sixteen years prior to today's application. Section sixty-eight point one point three A outdoor spaces, public, common or shared place states the following. Any development proposed to create a new, new neighborhood will significantly contribute to the pattern of an existing neighborhood, including an incentive housing development, open space subdivision, planned residential development or two-family dwelling will provide public, common or shared open space as required by these regulations for recreation, leisure, socializing or interfacing with mixed uses. The area of any series of open spaces on any property will average at least one half acre in size. The Connecticut Cancer Foundation was approved as an office philanthropic charitable institution. Connecticut Cancer Can- Foundation is not an incentive housing development, open space subdivision, planned residential development, two-family dwelling or mixed use development. So section sixty-eight point one point three A outdoor spaces, outdoor space regulation does not apply. There is no easement provided to allow the outdoor space or patio to allow for public access. So there's no guarantee that the outdoor space with benches would allow for anyone passing by to use the space without trespassing. No regulations have been amended since the twenty sixteen approval that will allow for the plan to remain in the front landscape area.
Is there a second? Second by Jared in his line? Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll, we'll move to a vote. Um. What I'd like to do is I'll call you out by name and cast your vote either for or against or the same. Laura?
Wait, no, for or against?
The motion to deny.
Okay.
Are you for or against?
In favor of denying the motion.
Okay. Bob?
I'm in, in favor of the motion, yes.
In favor of the motion to deny.
John, favor of the motion to deny.
I'm in favor of the motion to d- deny. So it passes five, zero, zero. Thank you. Moving on to B, uh, Shoreline Auto Application for Special Exception Use for Motor Vehicle Repair and Used Auto Sales at fourteen ninety-one Boston Post Road and Two Center Road, map twenty-six, lots nine and six dash ones, Gateway Business B four district. Owner Julio Capia, if I pronounced that correctly.
Doctor.
Industries LLC, applicant Shoreline Auto. Agent Attorney Edward Casella, Action Open Public Hearing, continue or close by August eighteenth twenty twenty-five or no later than August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, attorney Casella.
Okay, um. Good evening, I'm a fellow representing um, Julio Capia. Capia Auto Bar Two, DBA Shoreline Auto. For the satisfaction, uh, Jim Freddy from Crisulo Engineering is here. Rob Coolidge, who's the architect, is here as well. Uh, we are going to be discussing uh, the application for uh, Shoreline Auto to construct a new um, motor vehicle repair and car sale facility at the property known as uh, fourteen uh, ninety-one Boston Post Road. I'll share a screen and then Jim has the plans here as well. Uh, I guess there's nobody in line, but um. So this property is uh, fourteen ninety-one Boston Post Road, what's, was the Davis School Building. Um, Julio now owns uh, Shoreline Quick Loop, which is next door. Uh, he's owned that since twenty eighteen. He's worked uh, there since two thousand and three and purchased it in twenty eighteen. Um, and he acquired this property fourteen ninety-one Boston Post Road in order to expand um, the motor vehicle operation that he has uh, in the area uh, as part of the uh, his and as part of doing this, he acquired um, Ibs, which is located at thirteen ninety-seven Boston Post Road, is an existing auto repair facility uh, back behind Action Sports. So he owns and operates that now and the plan is move that operation to this uh, property. And have, you know, for big full service uh, area of a, a, at this, at the, at this location. Um. I'll go through kind of some basics. Jim Freddy will go through the site design. Rob Coolidge will be able to answer any questions that you have regarding the building design. I can put those up on the screen. Um, but the, you know, the ultimate plan is fourteen ninety-one and two center road are two different parcels currently. Uh, the plan is to remove the building, the Davis Schools building at fourteen ninety-one. We're going to combine the two parcels into one. Um, and then construct new auto repair facility building with parking, drainage. Kind of in the middle of the property and then in the back, which is up on top. Uh, is going to be the area where the cars are parked for um, the auto sales uh, facility. So it includes forty-five parking spaces. That's what's required for this use. Six parking spaces are for like the office. Um, thirty-six, thirty-six parking spaces are required because he has six bays being proposed. Um, and then three parking spaces are required for the auto sales aspect of the use of the thirty-six spaces. Uh, twenty-four under your regulations are, are like holding cars or hold, you know, cars that are waiting to be um, repaired. Uh, so as Jim will go through on his site plan, you know, all of the customer parking, more than all the customer parking is located on the west side of the property and that's all paved. And then what's proposed to be up top is a little bit of overflow parking for cars being uh, repaired and then the, the storage area, so to speak, for the auto sales inventory. Um, the only changes to the center road property, you can see the line um, are a little bit of parking on the uh, uh, western side and then on the north. There's going to be a new driveway access connection. And then a stormwater um, facility down at the.
I'm sorry, could you point that out again? The access, please?
Yeah, sure. Come on.
Yeah, it's even weird.
Right here.
Okay.
In between the two and, and between the two, um.
Oh, okay.
There's a cut through, exactly. Right, or you can turn left. And then.
Is that just on the landscaping plan?
Um, I don't think so. I, I'm on the landscaping. Yeah, here it is, it's on the site plan.
Oh, okay. I'm just missing because I got lost in the green.
Yeah. It's, it's labeled proposed cross access too, so.
All right, is that?
No problem. Uh, and then, and then down at the bottom, we're taking advantage of the grass area that's in front of um, the existing Shoreline Quick Loop for uh, stormwater detention area. Uh, and again, Jim's going to kind of go through in, in a little bit more detail. And then we also received comments from Jeff Jacobson, which plans that you have in front of you, we believe address those comments. So we'll kind of go through the responses uh, to those as well. Um, we provided a sign plan. Um, an updated sign plan, uh, which we believe is consistent with the regulations. I will share that. It's not the right one. Uh, with two building signs, one is sixty-six square feet and um, one is fifteen square feet. On the front of the building will be the larger one and then on the side of uh, the new building will be the smaller uh, Shoreline Auto sign. Uh, since the properties are being merged together, we're only allowed one monument sign. So the monument sign that's out there now is going to remain. But it's just going to be in the same size, which is uh, forty-eight square feet. It's just going to be um, refaced to say Shoreline Quick Loop and Auto, auto repair oil and lube used cars. Uh, so that, that sign uh, in this, that location will remain. Uh, the statement of use provides that any illuminated signs will be on a timer and turned off one hour after uh, close of business. Um, so why don't I have Jim go through a little bit more detail, the site plan?
Uh, good evening. Uh, Jim Freddy was following Jerry, as someone has mentioned, um. So this is on the, the plans that you have, the uh, property on the top is fourteen ninety-one or on the east side, center road here on the bottom, the west side of both properties. Uh, this is the existing house that um, uh, that exists there now that has been commercial use um, for a while. That, that's coming down and, and the property line that um, I mentioned is this orange line that's in between. Removes. So new building. That, I mean, this property is um, this property is almost sixty thousand square feet, just shy. Uh, the new building here is about, just over five thousand, just over five thousand square feet. Um, entrance in the same location as was previous, but made now, you know, conforming to typical standards. Um, customer parking, uh, with the handicap spaces near the office, which is in the front corner of the building. Uh, and then one here, um, additionally paved spaces. Um, and then we have this area, uh, attorney sell up referred to on top. Uh, the, the natural grade of this property runs up to the back. Um, so take advantage of the uh, the grade, we have this drive that goes up to an upper area, so that wouldn't be necessary to cut it all down. Um. They highlighted the yellow here, the existing building, uh, two cent. Uh, we show a grading plan here, uh, that indicates how this all works. Um, with some spot shots and things around the front, um, to indicate if we need um, AVAs, uh, grades and path in the building. Um, there it is. And we'll get to that, but part of Jacobson's uh, comments was uh, the road control there, so we did add a two degree A that has more than enough information with that. Um. This is the uh, site utility plan. This has already been reviewed by uh, Connecticut River Health Department. Uh, we are going to, because this use is actually less, slightly less intense than was here before. Uh, the existing subject system that's in the uh, back will be reused. We will have to move um, the subject tank and pump chamber uh, that was immediately behind the old building, obviously in the way now, so that'll get new, but it'll reconnect to the existing system. The, again, this whole site drains in this direction, uh, so we have um, heard these parking spaces along the side and that, that basins. That will flow through a higher diameter separator and into a small detention area with an overflow into the existing um, state drainage system that crosses the road. Uh, additionally, there are underground infiltration units for the roof area that will again overflow into the uh, main system. We uh, have standards and pretty typical details, you know, including the old light pole bases that are flush. Um, sidewalk details, outdoor structure. Dumpster enclosure. Landscape plan. Uh, we are indicating, um, there is only about a hundred feet of frontage here, so we have three big trees. Um, they was building last evening, our front uh, office area. So um, parking landscaping trees in the islands and some um, screening trees. Uh, there's a certain amount of tree line here already. Uh, up against, near, close to the building, we're adding some here, rise and privacy for the this uh, other neighbor. And one, again, one of Jacobson's comments was screening on this side, this uh, up there. Uh, we do have this out. Kind of, let's see, I'll give you the about getting a multi-volted from.
You want to ask questions on the site plan or do you want us to keep going with the um, and go through the architecturals?
Um, we can go through the architecturals and the back of it.
Rob, I'll, I'll share my screen here, three.
Well, while you're um. Doing that, I just would. And you did see this, I'm sure from air.
Yes.
Right, that was recognized that they did not have a forum at this meeting.
Yes.
And it was opinion of two commissioners.
Yes.
Okay, right there, uh, uh, again, my boss, I'm designing architect for the.
Can you just spell your last name because I don't know.
Okay, it's Robert. And Coolidge, just like president, COO, that I did.
Thank you.
The uh, the building design uh, is made to look similar to the one that exists, both in materials and colors and the uh, metal fascia. For the uh, that surrounds the roof. The. The the site is very slightly pie shaped and I took advantage of that to make the design regulations for jogs in the building. So it wasn't one simple box, so that's what gives shape, it it's shape of getting a little larger as it goes back. Uh, and so it grew in part out of setback requirements. It has six bays to work in and a front section for the customers to come in here. And and uh, as well as the the small amount of sales that go on there for uh. There's not much else to say about it, I guess, um. This is just the floor plan, floor plan, yes, so the left in this floor plan is the uh, the public customer area. Uh, with with the sales desk and seating and a couple of desks for sales and uh, private office. There's a a fire rated wall between that use group and the repair section of the building. Um, and there's. Four phase of a sort of standard height and two bays with a higher ceiling, so the bigger vehicles could be done then. There's also a a an alignment area, uh, there's a different kind of lid for alignment. And uh, it's kind of flat for work, it's quite the, the um. The slight slope to it to the, you know, site, so it's cut at one end and fill with the other. And uh, it mostly there's, it mostly faces the street. And to the parking lot are the most interesting parts of the building. But it seems like the backside is mostly to a neighbor's property with a lot of trees. You're not, we're not seeing, you know, trees that are in this dome, we're not seeing these that are in the site plan and whatnot that, you know, are part of the, there are sections of the building. Then there's sections through the building, described the various.
So there's no showroom. It's not, the auto sale portion of the business doesn't have a showroom maybe. Is it similar to, I see a few cars in front of the oil change. That one is gonna be the.
Right, we don't plan to put anything on front, we talked about it and. Um, we're told the town doesn't like it, so I'm just putting all the used car sales in the back. Will be any used cars held in the front, uh, we will manage order inventory uh, online. But it's not gonna be ocean cotton, I'm going to want by any means.
I would imagine that if somebody says.
You have one.
I imagine that if someone says, I I see online that you have a twenty-twelve Honda, let's um. You would have your employee go fetch it for them, the public isn't going back to this time.
Right, I asked him to walk.
We received uh, comments from Jeff Jacobson, so I think it would be, uh, Jim and I can review the comments. Uh, that we received, we did repop, we did provide a response letter, so you should all have that. Um, the first one is sidewalks. Uh, so this plan does not show any sidewalks out on um, the front. And. And the the reason for that is twofold, first. There really is, on the north side of Route One. There's nowhere further to go east with sidewalks, if you're familiar and I. Put a picture, the property that's right across the street from the exit of Chopper Beach is ledge almost to the asphalt. Um, and even your sidewalk plan, which Chris provided.
This isn't a sidewalk plan, this is our um, it was a steep grant, these are the sidewalks that are going in to Westbrook.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The the.
But it shows, it demonstrates what's there and where the sidewalks are are go.
So the 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 plan right now, and I'll, let me just zoom this in. This is center road here. Okay, and then here's Dibble's property. And when uh, Big Y development was done, um, the. And the dual traffic lights were installed, you can see that there was two crosswalks, one on the uh, west. And then one on the east at um, Chopper Beach Road. And here's the property to the east of us with uh, the large ledge, this is the the pool guy and this is shoreline quick loop. So they're running sidewalks from uh, Westbrook. To Old Saybrook and basically stopping at Dibble. Encouraging pedestrians to cross the street. And then continue on the sidewalks on the south side of Route One, uh, with no sidewalks on the north side of Route One. And so we're requesting, that's why we're requesting not to install sidewalks here, because there's already infrastructure for pedestrians. Who are. In this area to cross the property, to cross Route One and then travel along the south side without the need for sidewalks here, which. Won't, you know, from what we can tell, won't be extended. There then, then you run into the Bushnell farm. There's no sidewalks there, there's no sidewalks on this north side for for quite a while. Um, and secondarily, within the DOT right of way. You're probably all familiar with the front of Shoreline Quick Loop property, there's a major drainage feature here. Um, in front of it, in front of the uh, in front of the quick loops, so that the the right of way here doesn't work. For for a sidewalk at this point in time, so without major investment. You know, a sidewalk's not really feasible. So tha- that's why we're asking the commission to not require, um, you know, sidewalks on this property. That was number one. Uh, number two was um. Since more than five vehicles will be parked within an outside storage area, it must be enclosed with a fence, wall and bankment or evergreens. As Jim discussed with the landscape plan. Right now. The survey shows it best, but I don't have that. We're proposing new evergreens. On the. South side, this is where the auto storage area will be. And new evergreens on the north side, supplement the existing vegetation, which is already here on the east side. So there is, we have added uh, an evergreen buffer, you know, surrounding the um, car. That's where the 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 used cars will be stored. Uh, number three, the original plan, we had compact car spaces. Uh, that were that were eight by fifteen. And if your regulations actually can put a little, or not, well, yeah, they can put a little bit here, but. Um, what? We eliminated all the eight, the smaller uh, parking spaces. And installed. Uh, full-size parking spaces. There are um. Thirty-three full-size parking spaces that are paved. And then twelve parking spaces, this gets into the next comment, twelve parking spaces that are up in the storage area. Plus room for sixteen to twenty cars that are going to be sold. So we've, we've addressed that comment in full by eliminating any eight, eight point five or or eight by fifteen um. Size spaces. Uh, next. Comment number four. Requires parking areas with twenty or more spaces to be paved unless otherwise approved by this commission. So. We're asking for this entire. Upper area to be allowed to be processed stone, which includes twelve of the parking spaces, three's here and nine across the back. And the reason why we're asking for that is because under your regs, really, those are not public parking spaces. There there, your regulations require. Four spaces per bay for storage while waiting for the vehicles to be repaired. So they're part of the, they're twelve of the twenty-four spaces that are required for any. Uh, you know, six, six bay facility, so those are spaces that Julio's crew. Will take from the customer who parks in a paved spot. Brings to the back until the garage space is ready to be used. So that's why we're asking and the commission has the discretion under the regulation to not pave more than we need to. There there's an excess of paved parking here, thirty-three spaces. Um, where, you know, that that's where the public will be parked and most of, most of the cars waiting for uh, repair will be parked as well, but. To meet your regs, we propose twelve up top. And are asking that those to be allowed to be um, on processed stone.
Could those be designated employee parking spaces?
Yeah, or if not even.
They're supposed to designate employee parking spaces anyway.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that might be a convenient location.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, tha- that absolutely. Um, so that either then they could be employee spaces. A portion of them, because are you gonna have twelve employees?
Where we have twelve, the other one, right now we have. Six.
Okay.
Uh, we managed to do the other one, always from our run that area.
You said you.
Yeah, so I think I think it would be good, right, employee.
Yeah, we we would definitely agree to that.
Because I'm sure the employee count will fluctuate seasonally.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, um.
I actually liked the idea of not having. Especially since it's up water.
Yeah. That's, that's the reasons.
The driving factor.
Yeah.
Yeah, reduce some of the.
Right. Yeah, all right, that was, I think, comment four, comment five was. For the driveway up to the area, originally that was processed. Um, we've changed that and now the driveway up to the area is paved. So again, we think we've addressed that comment. Comment six, um. The drainage calculations all need to be reviewed by Connecticut DOT. Um, so as you know, Connecticut DOT doesn't start paying attention to our plans until after. Uh, we get local zoning approval, Jim has submitted everything to them. Uh, but that, that's a, that's a post approval uh, requirement. We need to get DOT approval, not only for the drainage aspects, but also for the modifications to the, to the curb cut in front, because we're on Route One. The applicant should confirm that the height of the light poles, including the fixtures, will not exceed fourteen feet from ground surface. And the light poles need to be located five feet from a curb with flush concrete faces. Want to show the changes that you've made here?
You did do that, uh.
Three comments, not more than fourteen.
We did, uh, it's a little hard to see on here, but we did adjust them so that they were five feet for her. The detail shows the basis uh, flush and the information that was um. Submitted from the, I went back through the, because there was like a hundred and nine pages from the lighting consultant. And show um, the mounting height at fourteen feet.
Yeah.
Did I answer your question on the? Area between the two properties, I know that the the oil, oil change in the car wash place. It's all paved. And then you're going into, is is, are they gonna? Uh, merge together, all made, or what's going on?
There, there is a cut through here, connecting driveway, but this area was that will be, well, there's a, there's a dumb existing dumpster pad here, but. This area would be, um, there's a couple of trees routing, but lawn, basically.
Which grass in between the two properties.
Okay, that's right. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but between these parking spaces and. The quick loop parking spaces is actually a slope, right? So this slope will be vegetated.
Okay.
I don't know, is that shown on the left? Yeah. So here, you can see on the link, it's it's. It's shown as lawn, labeled as lawn.
That's my question, ventilated.
Site landscape plan should include a planting schedule identifying all plant materials with uh, names, including and including diameter and height. So that's been done. Um, street trees being three and a half inch caliper rest height. The evergreen being six feet high. The grading and erosion control to include all the requirements in sixty-seven point three point one. Um, Jim can go through that, but you know, if, you know, we're, I know Jeff Jacobson wasn't able to review our responses, so if the commission was. Willing, what we'd be asking you for is, you know, we we would just agree to a blanket condition that we satisfy all of these. Conditions and then when he, you know, post approval, if granted, he can comment. So I understand the situation going on here. Uh, but wanted to, wanted to demonstrate to you all why we believe we've um. Satisfied these, but we're not gonna go through what. The soil erosion control notes to show you that we've met all the requirements, he can do that. He recommends that the proposed silt fence at the north end of the site continue in an easterly direction along the rear property line.
And so it's just here, it's on the other sheet, but it just wanted to extend it around the backside.
That's been done. Uh, notes are placed on the drawings that all utilities must be underground. I I I provided a. Or you know, twenty on sheet three and note twenty-five on sheet four. Uh, applicant should indicate whether there are any pour drains, um, and then secondary containment. I think I actually, I noticed today that the statement of use doesn't say there will be no for drinks. So I've revised one.
I'll say.
I think the end of it says.
Did it?
I thought it did.
I looked for it, it says the secondary containment.
It did, it didn't say about, didn't say about.
Yeah, so I I.
The plans are labeled with no for.
I prepared a revised statement of use dated July twenty-first with a sentence that says there will be no for drinks, so I can submit that. Pass that over.
We had a question come up in the previous application regarding um. Waste oil, which will be handled by a professional. Uh, probably, but how are you handling the? Um, any uh, oil or transmission um, filters? In terms of of that being handled also by an environmental company.
Safety, safety, clean, every company that you do the fault and drainage.
Yes.
And where do you store those? Well, we have a. On the current building or the new one?
No, the new.
We have, we plan to put a two hundred fifty gallon, because we know. The quick loop has a two thousand gallon. Uh, storage tank that gets drained every week. Uh, this one won't do uh, the amount of oil, so the storage. Because I'm already running if, I've been trying to manage how much they use.
Sure.
Um, with two hundred fifty gallon tank, once we should be planning to drain uh, the amount of oil that is drained through the repair, because normally repair doesn't really do my toilet changes. They've done, by any chance, obviously, we have the quick loop right next to us.
And the, and the oil filters will be, how will they be?
They get crushed in a machine.
Yeah.
And they get, you know, they're gonna be pulled by the company.
Okay, thank you.
Zonings, number uh, comment thirteen, the zoning standard schedule should be revised to include the correct dimensions for minimum setbacks. Which the zoning setback table hasn't been modified. And the last comment was modification of the curb cut and the discharge of drainage will require DOT approval. And uh, we sent the plans for DOT and we understand that's a post zoning approval item. So. Other than that, I think that's everything.
Reassurance, you have questions of the applicant?
Do you only, actually, where do we find the gross floor area for the proposed service building?
The new building.
In square feet, if you will.
Yeah, um, uh, on this, on the, the plan here, the first floor plan. Is five thousand sixteen square feet. On the architectural plans. Is five thousand sixteen square feet on the architectural plans.
Do we have that page?
It's in the um. It's in this one.
Also, with regard to the, to the building, do we have site elevation drawings so that we can determine um. Windows and 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 the length of the building walls and the height of the building. I didn't see any site elevation drawings. Architects drawings, site elevation, what the building.
Yeah, there in here. Right there, yeah.
Uh that's a floor plan.
Okay, that has the height.
Uh we got the uh. Alright, okay. On the higher end of the building, yeah, okay, it's twenty-seven. I'm sorry, twenty-one, six.
That front piece of the building which has a bit of a. The the front section of the building has a. Small, first up in this area, there's some piece of botanical, I don't have the specs on it. But that's, they told us is their plan, so that with that little bit of parapet wall and the raised. Uh roof, I don't, I don't think that you see it from the street.
Right.
Especially because it's elevated, right?
Right, right.
What elevation on the first floor of the building, the first in the street? It's probably free. About five, first floor about five feet higher than the.
But you're going to a recent application with a large garage door type face on the building. We had as part of the motion for approval regarding windows. All windows shall consist of clear transparent glass only, no reflective glass, faux or glazed glass. Or any solid opaque materials are allowed. Windows are windows.
We'll be clear.
You gotta be able to.
Yeah, you have no problem, that's the idea.
And um.
They they're showing opaque panels on the bottom row of all the doors, because of the abuse they take.
Are they opaque or are they solid?
They're, they're solid.
There is like a solid metal.
Yeah.
See through those any, oh, because they're a metal.
Right.
Material and not opaque glass.
Right, that's the point.
Is it opaque glass or is it a solid panel?
It's a solid.
Okay, so it doesn't.
The sign internally illuminated?
Did we sign internally illuminated?
Well, we decided not to be internal eliminated, right?
If it's internally illuminated, then it has to be smaller than.
Right, the complaint wasn't internal illuminated.
Keep the size that proposed, it gotta be.
I understand that, we look over.
Not internal, but.
That's correct.
Alright.
With regard to the merging of the the lots. Um correction of non-conformities, especially with regard to street trees. As was emphasized by the, this picture here. There's not a street tree, well, not a street tree in sight, either on Route One or on Center Road. And if that's part of this application, because the lots are being merged, then there are supposed to be street trees. At a rate of one in each forty-foot section or fraction thereof. There's a little drawing in our regulations in sections. Uh. Sixty-three point three point one point C point two that shows how they are to be arranged. Now with that in mind, and look at what you have here with the uh, the stormwater detention area. And the uh drainage easement, however, there is still space on the um. In the twenty-five foot front landscape area near the existing sign where there could be trees planted. And there could be trees planted on Center Road as well um to comply with the regulations.
Were you gonna say something, Rob?
Oh, I was just gonna say that uh.
There's no, there's no trees in this area.
No trees whatsoever, it it isn't meant to represent the proposed. Planting, the uh Jim's.
Are a couple of street trees on the center roadside, yeah. Center roadside by the. North side, there's.
There's a couple trees already in here, but he's correct, there's nothing in there.
Yeah, there are street trees on the center roadside.
Right.
There's a couple of large trees minimum. There's three, four, I believe, five of them.
The question is, could you do something on a new one that?
Would you want to add a tree on one? Yeah, that's why you require, yeah, I don't know, you shot in trees.
As a condition of approval, add how many trees?
Two trees.
And that is.
Yeah, one, I think one near the sign and then one at the corner.
You know, on the, on the root ones. Anything needed on the.
Center Road has a few.
Oh, there's one or two.
Yeah, there are, and I can show it to you.
It's a total floor.
But if you had one on the corner, it would accomplish both. There's a couple of. Here, this is Center Road, so you can see there is a nice large street tree.
But you can zoom back, there's.
Uh that's Center Road?
Yeah, there's one around there. We have uh around the building, uh there's many other plants.
There's a one tree, then there's a long stretch of more than forty feet before the next tree.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a.
Utilities are there.
That's a transformer.
Transformer and a sign, I think, right?
Yeah. But we could do, we could do trees here up at the corner, which would add another one on both Center Road and. Route one and then do one near.
See, there's no trees there for a long way.
Yeah.
So you can put one on, one on the corner.
One here.
There, and then one down by the sign.
Yeah, correct.
Did you hear him say that, where he's gonna put the trees?
Yeah, near the sun.
Yes.
If we can get DOT approval.
For sideline?
They have an easement, DOT has a drainage easement that cuts across here, they may not allow anything.
Right, I was gonna mention that, but there's drainage underground, but I have to be careful.
There's some significant drainage activity going on there before it crosses the road.
Yes, water separator underneath.
Right.
There's a lot going on there, but if.
Like there, that.
I can put that one there, yeah, I, uh maybe, there's a. There's two there, right next to it.
The plans show a drainage easement, so to the extent that you can. Put a tree there, that would be good, but if you can't, there's still. The spot outside the easement where a tree could go.
Yeah.
There, there's a couple of opportunities, I agree.
Okay.
And what, what you do, what type of tree?
Um we had suggested red maple on the other side, but that's, there's a preference, we can change that, huh?
Red maple?
Red maple.
That's all I got.
That's, yeah, that's what I think. And is there room one that's part of the job? Or it's the new pro?
Well, that's where the drain.
The basement's all the way through there. Like where the sign is, that's.
Yeah, this is the drainage basin.
Yeah, it's over.
What about behind it? It's not really a street tree, but.
We're going to have trees, we will have trees, we will have a tree right here.
Have a tree right at the corner. Right there.
Yeah.
And then there will be a tree a little further back here, parking lot.
Here, then, and then once we get out of the drainage easement, we can have none of them here. And maybe even, it wouldn't be technically a street tree, I guess, because it's not.
Right.
On property line, but once we could, you gotta get out of these.
So one near the sign and one on Center Road?
Yeah.
Earlier, you talked about the two crosswalks. When we talked, talked about the sidewalk and the sidewalk is obviously not gonna fit with the state's. Construction stuff there, but uh to the east or the right, as you have there.
Yeah.
When you get closer to the eastern boundary of the, the, this application. Right. It's a, there's a. Big cliff. Yeah, so that, yeah. That curb cut, that's just above the, the, the Chevron in the middle of the street there, that goes up to the Red House.
Yes.
Right, where the Murphy's used to live, any old timers here?
I don't know where the Murphys are, but I knew that was their house.
There was an artist that captured the civilian construction corps stuff from the Roosevelt administration. Famous work. Hey, um that, that property is not amenable to sidewalks either with the.
Right.
And this stuff, but uh that, that crosswalk exists there now?
Yes.
Right. I'm afraid that's as good as it gets. How many people would walk to a car service place, I mean, if your car was already there and you somehow it got transportation away? And your transportation back didn't get you close enough, that's like one in a million for somebody to walk to a. An auto repair place, but. It's a landowner's decision, which has to consider the future that might be something different. But the way that the guardrails are and the ledge over there, this. This is not gonna be a, what the crosswalks make up for?
Anything else?
Uh no.
Yes, I don't have any further questions. Are there any outstanding points from Jeff Jacobson that were unaddressed, that they all got checked off there?
Yeah. The applicants agreed to um have Jeff take one last look at it and see the condition potentially. That the amended plans are renewed, but the satisfactorily town engineer.
That's like Joanne, head up, those, those, those might be conditions of approval, Jeff Jacobson before.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
The um windows from.
I have Jeff Jacobson's, I have the windows, two street trees. The structure coverage and the gross floor area to the zoning data table. I I got it listed.
But but let's, let's uh make a motion close of public hearing, but before I do that, it is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak? Or against the opposite, no one in the audience, no one online?
No.
Um therefore, I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
For shoreline auto application for special exception use for motor vehicle repair, used automobile sales. In fourteen ninety-one Boston Post Road and two Center Road. Is there a second by Jerry Lewis? Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll uh vote to close public hearing, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the public hearing is closed, so the only ones able to speak at this point would be the five commissioners and staff. Um.
This is condition also would be.
Well, that wasn't, that wasn't illegal, it was a drug, and it was, it's also not illegal, then.
Right.
And I read it into his record.
So just housekeeping referrals were sent on June sixteenth, I don't expect any other referral responses, you may have already closed the hearing. And I have a list of potential conditions. Okay, decide you want to move forward to next.
Okay, just. Anybody else willing to uh wanna make a motion at this point, or shall I?
Did you wanna make the motion, or do you? Did you wanna make the motion?
No, somebody else.
Make a motion to approve shoreline auto application for special exception use. For motor vehicle repair and used automobile sales at fourteen ninety-one Boston Post Road. And two Center Road, map twenty-six, lot nine, and six point one, gateway business before district. Um is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, before the second, I should make the conditions. With the following condition.
The twelve spaces in the process stone area will be designated as employee park parking. Um the town engineer um will consent to final approval. Of the plans, structure coverage and gross floor area will be added to the zoning table, say data table and square feet. All glass will be clear glass, no reflective glass or opaque. Um street trees will be added uh on the Route One side, three and a half diameter at breast height, six feet in height minimum. One near the sign and one on Center Road, um the. Probably also address. The zoning commission is not requiring sidewalks along the frontage of the property. Due to easements and other drainage constraints. It will prohibit the construction as well as the lack of connectivity.
There. Any other conditions? And um that the two properties at fourteen ninety-one Boston Post Road and two Center Street will be merged.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis, any further discussion? Not hearing any move to a vote, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining, passes by zero, thank you very much. Many representative and staff reporters.
Hey, um I I did send some emails today, uh today we received notice that um. The towns repeatedly uh grant that I was working on for the Department of Housing for. Approximately seventy-eight thousand dollars. Um to review our accessory or mixed-use apartment regulations in the B one to do a parking analysis. And a soils analysis. Um to see why our housing regulations are working or not working as well as we. I'm sorry, not of our mixed-use apartment regulations are working or not working as well as we want to, as well as to potentially. Identify some sites where mixed-use parking would work. I also sent you an email with some photographs on twelve Bel Air Drive, this is an ongoing zoning matter. Um that the zoning commission. Appealed the property on our two superior court. Uh we met there last weekend, there's been reductions in some of the sheds and removal of walls and so forth, so that one's progressing. Um. We're in a little bit of a quiet time, but I think we're gonna have a busy fall. And I don't know if you have any questions or anything for me, I'm just keeping it brief.
Do we have anything for um next agenda, our next meeting?
As of today, we have nothing for your next agenda. You do have an application on August eighteenth. Uh for apartment over business on Main Street. So unless something comes in. Let's cancel that, Mary. And I'm working on your housekeeping regulations, including the. The water tanks and so forth, it's just taking a little longer than anticipated, so. I'm sure we'll get to it.
Anyone have anything else, Bob, on the housing?
Oh, I missed last meet, the meeting, sorry.
That's fair.
So the, the last meeting, well, it was more the planning commission meeting, there was the thrive presentation, I know, the final report, they were. Regional housing or regional planning was looking for an endorsement from the town, the planning commission and.
The survey is available.
Yeah, and the housing survey.
I got that.
Available. I checked.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
And Jerry, I checked it by John Henry, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone.